You know, I think in Genesis, we have a soul day, like have possums and raccoon.
Who you say?
It's what they say, buy what they build. All right, all right. Chief, chief, before the payment.
Let me ask you this. Don't they say buy what they build? Didn't they say that?
Right.
How can we can't have a raccoon and a possum day out here? A barbecue? That's what Genesis says. That's a thought. We ain't want these kids. I'm gonna say the raccoon. You eat coon, I said, uh, yes, ma'am, but I'm gonna say something about it. I don't know what it was.
If you'd like to make a motion, trustees, to leave the executive session and return to regular meeting.
I'll second the motion.
We are back for regular meeting at 6:00 P. M., 6:21 P. M. Okay, next on the agenda, gentlemen, is discuss the finance package for the tankers so you can make sure we're at a sound. Somebody want to get the discussion started?
Is the paperwork the most thing we have to do?
We've got a purchase agreement from Sufin that needs our signatures tonight. The rep wants us to call him after the meeting to let him know the paperwork is signed because I think he's gonna come down and tell him to pick it up. So basically, what we have to do is discuss the finance options. We've got three calls now. Chart bill consensus that we can vote on in the next meeting.
Okay, since by the, we've got three of them coming, right, Jim? This is with Republic and Community?
We've done work with Republic for, um, one of the options, I think we had credit and, uh, pre-approval on some.
With Republic only, you mean?
We, we did, uh, we worked with Republic on the meds, I think, on the chastity.
So, did the? Uh?
Community on, uh, what did that?
That's right. Yes, we do. So, uh, in the verbiage, uh, not doing these, not doing this kind of financing every day. One year for close means one year from the night of signing the paperwork tonight, right?
No, so we've got a year to, uh, set aside the first payment.
So?
Now, the first proposal, the original proposal that came with bid for, uh, Sufin, if you look at that, they're plugging in, uh, 2023, so they're making the first payment due at delivery date. I think that's something that we, we can push around if we wanted to, but the way that I look at it, if we paid on it year, next year, the following year, we already have this thing halfway paid for before we even take delivery, delivery on. I was told by the reps, the money market is very fluid, they're expecting interest rates changing, they said any more delays, it's probably gonna get into one rate we can lock in. It's all subject to credit approval. Once we decide on a finance vendor, everything happens pretty fast. I think one of the proposals wants us to have it funded within 14 days, but it looks like, based on what I've gathered from talking to these reps, that's not gonna be a problem meeting the deadline for certain.
I mean, the interest rates have created the terms are all the same, five, seven, nine. My year that 2.29 is across the board. I think one hundred all of them. Looks like the, uh, seven year of the communities, the interest rate's the lowest, that's the lowest interest rate. With one year, one year close, seven year term, 2.32, that's the lowest interest rate.
Chief, fresh online on how, what's, you said something about a 10-year turnaround on equipment or rotating it out or something? 10 years second on equipment?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of departments that are, um, selling their apparatus that's 10 years old because you get more out of it at 10 years old than what you can at 20 years old. And whoever buys that piece of apparatus is getting a fantastic deal.
At 10?
At 10 years old.
So do it, do it.
I also got clarification from Sufin that we are still at the 600-day delivery date if we sign the report tonight. But I think they're formally holding our place, but we need to get this thing started.
Right, right. Physical officer, Mr. Tracy. So, uh, I wish we looked, we looked at this very much, I think we did. I can't look at you here to advise, so, you know, we have payments in the neighborhoods of 80, we see them up to 140. Do I need to worry about 100, getting up to 140? I need to worry about that, but I need to stay down.
You have a payment, you're paying for about 77.
Well, that's another year, so 140, I'm kind of like, I'm paying it off a lot faster, too.
No, I'm saying, but currently you have a payment. Uh, for 77, that's, I think it's five years.
77? Five, five more years?
It started this year, so it's a total of five years.
Okay, okay.
That was for the, no, yes, that was for the remounts, the remounts in the, in the C2 vehicle.
Okay.
And then you have one that's 35, it will take, I think that was 12 years. That's 35,000 bucks.
Yeah, okay.
So now, you gotta determine how much, if you add another one in, in '23 is what you said? Which is two years from now, that, that total will be that for how many of the years you, at least five, at least four years? Three years, you have that total for three years, at least. Do you have that much in the platform or will you put that much in the platform in order to cover that, that total?
Chief?
What are your targets?
So, you know what she's saying right now, we're at 122 payout, you know, so can, can I? Afford to pay this thing off in five years and have 100, no, that would be up to, uh, 260, 265 a year in loans. You know, in a short, the, the terms we give, it all be basically gives the same term, five, seven, and nine. So if I wish to do in the five-year, do it over the payoff, um, I'm up to 265-ish a year, um, coming out, coming out of your funds. I just, I need some input from, you know, you guys, I, I. So, but then she, chief also, so I gave that number 265, so then let's take it down to the bottom end, and at the nine-year financing, the cheapest, the cheapest is 73, so that works, uh, you're 195, you have 200.
Right.
For, for that, so, you know, that's, should give us a lot more cushion. And you, you've already mentioned a 10-year life cycle. We'd be in that 10-year life cycle, a year for the first payment, then nine years of payments, that's 10 years.
Right.
So, are you more comfortable with that?
With the 10-year? Yes.
Okay. Not while you're 90, yeah.
But I guess the thing is, is that, that leave you any room if you mind purchasing for an emergency?
Especially, absolutely not for your five-year lease, absolutely no way. If we stay with the nine-year lease, we still might have a little room in there.
Right.
Right, right, chief? Okay. So?
When's the ambulance is up?
Five.
Five, in five years?
Just start this year, so it's a total of five years.
Five years, okay.
Twenty-six?
So we have four years, we have those papers.
On twenty-six, I guess that's five years.
Yeah. So we can.
No, no, you don't have, yeah, you have the 17 and the 35. But 35 is for 12 years. So you have the 77 and the 35, the last four years.
Seventy-five and thirty-five.
77 and 35, the next four years.
Yes. And then we lose, we lose that one.
Right, and then you have the, the other one.
This will, same as that, same.
Oh, close to.
It close to this. Okay, so, Rory and Jim, if you listen to them guys, it's like leaning towards their advice, leaning towards the law, the law per, uh, law term. Did you, okay, talk about the law term?
Well, when you look at the difference in the payments.
Yes.
If, the $20,000 difference between the seven and the nine.
Yes, saw that.
I don't picture our budget being so tight that we couldn't afford that extra, extra money.
Emergencies? You know, the same for more.
We run it down that cliff, we're in a lot of trouble if, if $20,000 is gonna make a break whether or not now. We do have, it's a state law, the non-appropriation clause, so if for some reason we got into trouble, we, we don't appropriate that payment for the year, we turn it in.
Yeah, I, I understand that, that's not the game I want to play at. I was talking to the nightclub stewardess on TV and I was sort of like. Okay, so Jim, if, what about if we, okay, I understand that it's, it's roughly $20,000 difference, that's a one-year payment. But, you know, like, so, you know, make extra payments on my house, you do, so you still finance it for the nine, and instead of making the nine payment, make, pay that extra 20 at, at the year, so instead of paying the nine-year payment, pay that, pay the extra, which is principal, you need to pay off for the, in the same amount of time, but you still have the cushion in case something does come up, and we need that $20,000, we have the cushion. Sign for the nine, but make it, make $20,000 extra, but $25,000 to pay the years.
I mean, the only other argument for the nine would be, the days of seeing 2.5% money, we're not gonna see that in five years away, everything's going, so it does, uh, that is an attractive rate for, for what we're giving. 10 years of, it's essentially nine payments over 10 years, and that's gonna, that's very inexpensive money. So it's, uh, but you're also, uh, you're making a commitment that's gonna impact probably to future administrations here.
Well, you also have to abandon the new apparatus, too. So, rather than wrap that in, so the lowest, the lowest, Jim, at the nine-year term, the lowest interest, interest rate is the 253, but it's not the lowest payment. One year, so the republics are all one year to close, and you got 80,901 on the nine-year. And the nine-year, one year to close on the community is 254, 100% higher, which I don't like much, but the payment's $7,000 less. Are you gonna, are you equalizing the, is there a math problem there, or it seems like it'd be a lot closer to that?
I think there's been some change in the rates, and the bigger down payment has probably changed enough numbers of the, I mean, rates are changing daily when they hold this stuff, so that, that probably would explain it, without the reps being here. But, uh, the gentleman from Kansas said, you know, it's, it's a daily thing on how they're calculating these.
So like, so you got the nine-year term, uh, basically, you, the company, this, through the purchase, to this, you have manufacturer, starts a year from now.
It's two years from now.
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, yeah, two years from now, and it's 80, 83. Republic's one year, 80, 901. The community at one year is the cheapest, 738, 73,831.
Really, won't be enough to sell on issue of time, are we in agreement that we should vote on a nine-year plan?
I say yes.
Mr. Man?
I'm good, and, and you're talking about 10 years on the, on the community lease, right?
Right. Okay. Now, it's a matter of, uh, what rate payment we want, gentlemen?
Well, how true are these numbers, or we just made a comment that they're changing daily? You know, if not all three of these people, the people made this thing the exact same date, the numbers, by my logic, the numbers look different.
Well, all of them, we have to apply for it, and I mean, you know, they've got verbiage in years subject to approval.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, and obviously, this is a nice chunk of business for any lender, so, I mean, they're gonna, the number's gonna be as close as they can get with what they have.
Well, if we move to the nine-year, I kind of look like that one that extends out, we don't have the first payment till we get it, two years from at least two. That gives the, the overlay, we have, we spoke under the five year we have on the remounts of 77, that gives that another year, another year we don't have both of, this is another year cushion. So go with at least two for the nine, because it starts on 10/25/2023.
Okay. So this is, uh, this is the, you're talking about the proposal from Brian Myers with Sufin, right, Jim?
Option three of the, uh, at least two, in Brian Myers, yes.
Good. What you want to go on, next name, Mr. Man?
Okay.
Any other, uh, discussion on the fire truck? Okay. Trustees, any new business for the, uh, whole session?
Chief, are you gonna be here during the regular meeting?
No.
I would, I'd like to comment that. So I wanted to be known that, um, I was given a newspaper article in regards to an employee we have, and, um, you can't believe everything you read in the newspaper, you can't believe everything you see on the internet. And, um, I'm human, I guess I made a mistake, and I want to apologize to Mr. Wright for an accusation I made towards him from an article I saw in the newspaper, and, um, it's been all corrected and fixed and cleared up, and, um, I do apologize you from the bottom of my heart, sir. Actually, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wright, if you want to say anything in the open meeting related to this, to clear the air, there's all kinds of rumors on social media, do you want to say anything?
Pertaining to?
Anything that applies to this apology?
Well, I don't believe everything I see on social media. I don't believe a lot of things out here. No.
Good.
No.
Sorry, Jim. Apologies.
All right, any other old business, trustees? Any new business?
I have some old, old business, where do we stand with a full evaluation of our district?
Well, I know for sure you're not gonna be doing it.
And why is that?
And I think, uh, probably the next step is we're gonna all have another meeting with Peterson, possibly Matt Heck. I'm pushing for a meeting with Matt Heck. So? That's where we're at. I'm not gonna let you create a minimum lawsuit for this township because you don't like our township administrator and refuse to work with him.
This, this has nothing to do, has nothing to do with friendship or liking or disliking a man, it has to do with doing the job.
There's nothing.
Me doing my job. Me, no, me, me doing my job, my job is to give that man a full evaluation every year, and try it year after year after year. There's always reason why you can't do it.
Okay, any other old business?
I, you want, I got some, I don't know if it's older than your business. I need, uh, I see that on the agenda, you're gonna hire, you're gonna hire two or other. Request to hire two or three, sorry, three new firefighters, and I have no data, I have no information on them, and the resolution is not complete enough for me to get them in the pay corps, so before, if you hire those people and before they can be put on the schedule, I need to be able to have them into, into pay corps because if they don't work within the next two weeks, and then all of a sudden, two weeks later, a timesheet shows up on my, um, my hand, and then out of the system, they won't get paid again, and I'll have to pay another $500 fee to do them off-cycle. So this resolution does not have sufficient information, I need an email address to invite them in, to at least an email address to invite them in to pay corps. Or I need to have, um, them to call me and schedule time so we can, me to get this stuff into pay corps, make sure it's done before they start their, their schedule.
We, we as trustees had a pretty heated discussion about this, and the people made, based on people not getting paid, you know, and it's our responsibility as leaders of this township, if people don't get paid, it comes back to us. And we had kind of a lengthy conversation on that, and the owners were happy about it. And we gave them the right to go ahead and spend extra money to make that payment so the people got paid. And we talked about how this starts, and here we are doing the same thing again. We need to have policies and procedures in effect where, and I, and I know, I don't want, I don't want somebody to want to see that private information in this resolution that could accidentally get put out for the wrong place, but we need to come up with some kind of policy, some way to get Tracy the information she needs on the new hires. I want to hire these people, they need hired, we need to pass this resolution tonight. The parent here doesn't have enough information for her to do her job, all right, so, just again, we need to work as a team to come up with a policy procedure, some way to get this information into pay, into the payrolls.
The solution to that is real simple. What's the start date? So basically, to allow for the paperwork, when do you want to start these employees?
Should be in the resolution?
The resolution mentions that, that the chief, in those three instances, is going, is going to notify the fiscal officer when the start dates begin.
Oh.
So they have all the paperwork before they, again, that, that's, if you read the resolution, you guys don't read that and see it. So the procedure for at least these three are in there.
Okay, good.
So they're not gonna get a schedule until they're born with the system?
Correct.
Okay, well, good, okay, well, thanks. Go ahead, man. So you go try to do that going forward, everybody's right, we're gonna do it that way then, maybe, I mean, is that, is that policy didn't work? If we could do that?
When we hire them, they'll go to, well, they'll give Tracy a vote and set up the time where they can get with her.
Okay.
And get everything set up that she wants.
What's even better, if she, leaves another human out there making mistakes, paperwork getting missed, lost, whatever, that's, that's the idea? Okay.
And I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, I just don't want to see what happened.
Yes, maybe, no, it's right.
No.
Okay. Tracy, did you pay that? Am I checking you directly there?
They need to contact me before they get on the schedule. Like I explained before, the issue is clear that they, like, there's one, there's still today, one employee that's still not in the pay corps, she worked for two hours on a training, and she's not been scheduled, and she hasn't come back. She's gonna come in, and I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get it, she.
Has she called you?
No, well, yes, she called me, she's the only one that can't get in, she says she can't get in the pay corps. Everybody else has no problem.
Well, they did have, and everything's been worked out.
Well, that's because of the email issue, but I was sending the, the response to her personal email, and she says she, she couldn't get in there.
Okay.
So I guess she has access now through the township, and of course, a lot of it had problems when our server got hit, too.
Right, right.
So that was a big issue back there, too. And so, there's one, still one of those, so it just drag, one's dragging, I got, I was able to manage to get everybody else in.
I'll call you tomorrow and find out who it is.
Okay. And then, so, just, just for my sake, it would be nice, at the night that you guys bring each to the board, to the table, and the trustees approve them, then I get the folders handed to me, because that would give me time to get the data into the system. And then it wouldn't take long for me to do what I have to do when the employee calls me. And then all they have to do is get in there and check, check, and I can push the button, and they're in.
Then the only thing I ask, if, if you do that, then, then I need a photocopy of the, like, front page so I can get that information entered into our.
So, you don't have the paper, the photo right now, correct? The photos for those employees, these employees?
For the three?
Yes. Okay, they're here to take, you want a photocopy of those pages?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, that, that's all you want, is that, that, is copy that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we enroll them in our computer because of, in case they get injured, then my people know who to call.
Well, that, the, okay, so now I'm confused on what front page, you have to tell me what front page you're talking about.
Front page of the application.
The application, okay.
Yes.
Application, okay, I got you now. Okay, so that's one issue. I hope that's all, but we'll find out. The next issue is concerning our single certification firefighter. Because of the issue we had with our EMS coordinator, and she was single serve, and she wants to be on OPNF, found out based on OPNF, she's not qualified, it's a single certification, she has to be under Oprah.
Okay.
But when I did that, it didn't hurt, but Oprah says, how many other single serves do you have? I says, I don't know, I have to check, we have, I think, at least seven. Other than the single serves that have been hired, there's not that much that they have, they're required to be on Oprah.
Oprah's.
Not Social Security.
Okay.
So, that means back until twenty twenty, about September of twenty twenty, we had one hire. No, I'm gonna go back to, yeah, somewhere, yeah, September, we had one hire who's still with us. Um, that's, gotta go back, and we gotta do all the reports for Oprah's back to that day, which means that includes late fees or penalties. So I'm, I'm asking you, trustee, how do you want to handle them? I don't think there's really a decision to be made, we.
You gotta do it.
But I want you guys to be aware, when I'm doing this, I have to have it, I have to have it done, and I'm gonna have to pay additional fees to do this. At least seven, I plan. And the farthest one back goes back to September of twenty twenty. So then we have to do all the reports back to them. Every month. Correct. Penalty. I have to do it before the end of this month, or we're getting another penalty for September.
Learn something every day, don't you?
And exactly, we did penalize per day. We penalize per day, as a percentage per day.
So the trick is to make sure we put this in policies, so this does not happen five years, six, seven years down the road, this is, you learn from mistakes.
I don't know if there's so much policy or some, I guess it would be policy because Oprah's, you know, you gotta have Oprah's for certain things, and I wasn't aware of it, I'm sure that people before me weren't.